Call the meeting to order.
Welcome to the February 2nd, 2021 Board of Commissioners meeting. Ask you to please silence your phones, pagers, and other electronic communications devices. Agendas are in the back. We do use the speaker request form, so for anybody that would like to be on the speaking item, please sign that. Turn it over to Holly Hinnies over on your right. Call on Commissioner Ross Koenig to lead us in a moment in silent reflection and the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner. Now do a review and approval of the agenda.
No motion.
I got a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
And a second. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. I will now call on Sheriff Tom.
Good morning, Commissioners. Kevin Tom, Pennington County Sheriff, and I have the Fire Chief and Police Chief with me, Don Hedrick, Jason Culberson. And we wanted to recognize Emergency Management, representing the Users Board for Emergency Management, and those who serve as the executive team for Emergency Management for Dispatch. And we wanted to recognize them for the work they did with the COVID-19, in particular the shelter that was stood up. We kind of waited to make sure we didn't have to stand it up again. We think we're past that. Hopefully, we are. So we wanted to recognize them today with that. And I'll turn it over to the Fire Chief and Police Chief and let them make a few comments as well. Super. Thank you.
Thank you for having us here this morning. Don Hedrick, Rapid City PD. Just wanted to take a minute to acknowledge Emergency Management, Dustin and his team. They were put in a very unique situation, to say the least, tasked with helping to put together a shelter for the vulnerable in our community. And it's something we had never done before, and definitely probably way outside of our comfort zone. But Dustin and his team really stepped up, and we just wanted to take a minute to say thanks and appreciation for them. I know there were many, many hours and after-hours that him and his team put in. So again, just here to say thanks.
Thank you, Chief. Chief Culberson.
Good morning. Thank you. Chief Jackson Culberson with the Rapid City Fire Department. Not sure if I can say anymore, but thank you to the Emergency Management crew and team for putting it all together. They worked extremely hard, harder than most of us, putting this shelter together and making it happen. Without Dustin and his leadership, I don't know how we would have gotten it accomplished. Many hours, many things put together, and I don't know if we could have done without him. So not just because he's also a fire department employee, but it helps. Anyway, thank you to Mark and Dustin, Lexa, Pepper, everybody in that office.
Thank you, Chief.
I think Holly wants a picture. Let's go this way. It's a Kodak moment, so yeah.
Hi, Lloyd.
How's that, Holly?
Perfect.
Sneak your head in between theirs.
Thank you. Dustin, the microphone is yours.
Chair, thank you. I was going to ask for just a moment of privilege.
Are you going to have silent reflection?
I pride myself on a lot of things being silent. Unfortunately, isn't one of them as much as it should be. I just, so the mention was made multiple times of team, and I just wanted to reiterate that it's so humbling to receive recognition, and it means so much to me, to our office, and to my incredible employees. And we're very, very appreciative. But there's also that side of there were just so many people involved in making that operation the success that it was. Cindy and the Auditor's Office, the things we kept throwing in front of them was just as novel and difficult to figure out and navigate through. So there were just so many people involved in this. But really, I just wanted to say that the opportunity to lead this office and this mission for both the county and the city is the highlight of my career. And we would not have the resources, the training, the people. We would not be positioned to be as successful as we've been for the citizens of Rapid City and Pennington County without the support and leadership of the Sheriff's Office, the Fire Department, the Police Department, Pennington County Fire, and certainly the elected bodies of Rapid City and Pennington County. You know, the need was recognized, and we've always had the political policy and financial support of the elected bodies, which allow us to be successful in our roles in the community. So thank you for the recognition, and as always, thank you for your continued support of Emergency Management in the community.
Dustin, I know that you've got a great staff. To have the Sheriff, the Police Chief, and the Fire Chief all come together to give you an award like this is pretty special in my mind. I know that it took a lot of people to put this together, but it needs a direction at the top, and you provided that. So we appreciate what you've done.
Thank you, and it's been an honor.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it coming in, guys. Okay. Call on Holly Hinnies.
Good morning, Commissioners. For public notice, the Board of Commissioners uses the consent agenda to act on non-controversial and routine items. The consent agenda is acted upon by one motion and vote of the board. Items may be removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda at the request of a board member or a citizen. Today's consent agenda contains the following items. Approval of the minutes from the regular meeting of January 25th, 2021. Number seven is to correct the minutes of December 15th, 2020, to include the three resolutions for tax segment finance district number five in their entirety as approved. Number eight is to acknowledge the notice of intent to conduct a raffle from the Wasta Volunteer Fire Department. Number nine is to appoint Mr. Bart Jox representing Unit 1 and Mr. Mark DeSanto representing Unit 2 to the Pennington County Weed and Pest Forum, each for a term of three years. Number 10 is to declare the following items as surplus equipment for sale or trade. A 1985 Harley-Davidson motorcycle, a 1993 International Truck, a 2013 Chrysler Town and Country, a 2015 Polaris Ranger, a 2004 Yamaha 660 Grizzly, a 2006 Thor 4 Winds, a 2003 DIAC 10-foot trailer, a 2006 Forest River Wildwood 27-foot, and a 40-foot fourth-wheel hydraulic trailer. And that's submitted by the Sheriff's Office in search and rescue. And finally, number 11 is to correct an error in the hourly pay rates previously approved on January 5th, 2021. Corporal Eric Lindsay, currently at a B-32 Step 12, 3160 an hour, to Sergeant at a B-32 Step 15 for 3271 an hour. Corporal Lauren Gary, currently at a B-32 Step 6, 2909 an hour, to Sergeant at B-32 Step 8, $38.13 an hour. And Corporal Philip Rivera Jr., currently at a B-32 Step 1 of 2574 an hour, to a Sergeant at a B-32 Step 3 at 2708 an hour.
Are there any members of the public that would like to have any items 6 through 11 removed from the consent calendar? Seeing none, is there any Commissioners that would like to have any items removed?
Mister Chair, item nine.
Item nine, Commissioner Ross Koenig. Any others? I would take a motion to approve items 6 through 11 with the exception of 9.
Move for approval.
Second.
I've got a motion and a second by Commissioner LaCroy, second by Commissioner Lassiter. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. Item nine, Commissioner Ross Koenig.
I'd just like to take this time to thank Mark DeSanto for stepping up to wanting to be part of the County Weed and Pest Board for a three-year term. I think Mark is a good fit for that, and his heart's really into it. So just wanted to express a thank you to Mark for stepping up.
Thank you.
Mister Chair.
Commissioner LaCroy.
I would echo Mr. Ross Koenig's sentiments, because he's also stepped up, and he's on the 4-H Board, too. So I mean, just because this person stepped down from being on the Commission, he's still doing his public service and wanting to be a part of the Commission, that says a lot about our community and Pennington County, so.
Yeah, thank you. Holly, do you know, is Mr. Jox, is this a first term or is this a reappointment? We appreciate his service. Willing to continue to serve. Is there a motion?
Move for approval.
I've got a motion. And a second. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion approved. Next item is the regular agenda items. Auditor Cindy Muller, please.
Good morning, Commissioner Cindy Muller, Pennington County Auditor. We're asking for approval of the transfer from Horse Creek Inn Restaurant under Castle Creek Enterprises to Horse Creek Inn under Bearded Buffalo Trading Company, and this is for the retail on sale liquor license.
Move to approve. Got a motion from Commissioner Ross Koenig in a second. From Commissioner Lassiter. Further discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? unanimous.
Thank you.
Mike Cool, Buildings and Grounds. All right, Mike.
Good morning. Mike Cool, Director of Buildings and Grounds. I am here seeking two additional FTEs for Buildings and Grounds. It appears that through working through, having some discussions with different departments, and through work with the Building Committee, appears like that we may have some significant amount of work here in the near future. So I'm interested in trying to bring on some additional project manager management support with a project manager, as well as getting an administrative assistant on board and to assist us with some of our administrative items within the department.
Thank you, Chairman.
Commissioner Adcock.
Move to approve two FTEs in the Building and Ground Department, one project manager to be defined, and one administrative assistant. DBM A13.
Is there a second?
Second.
Further discussion?
Mister Chairman.
Commissioner LaCroy.
Mike, you know, I'm in support of the two FTEs. I have to say, as being part of the committee and what happened when we decided to do away with the project manager, you know, I was part of that and the hiring process and moving you up. And a lot of things, you know, that was three years ago, when things were, we were winding down, and I appreciate you on our projects, and things haven't slowed down. The structure of, I guess I'm looking for a little more discussion on the job titles and what should be done working with HR, because I really think, when I look at Buildings and Grounds and where they come from and where we are today, you know, back when we were doing just the, had just the courthouse and annexes and detox, and then how it's evolved into the care campus and administration building, and it's all involved. And back then, you know, Mike Peterson was, worked his way up, and he knew all the intricate steps, because it was second nature to him. So I'm almost thinking like an operational manager. These are some of the thoughts I'm thinking of that we could do. And I see you're a key person, you're, you know, you are a project manager. I mean, you've done an amazing job as that, and I kind of see the role as you being able to do that and having an operation manager, but I don't know. I think that's something between you and HR and Council Commission Leadership to discuss and work on, but I know you need this to move forward. And so I guess that's where I'm thinking of, Mike, and HR, because I just see that it's evolved to that point where we kind of need that. Because quite frankly, I see, we need someone that can put out the fires and work with the HR part of the department, and someone to oversee that projects and manage the monies and the budgets. I know I'm not explaining it well.
Oh, you're.
We can talk about it later, and hopefully you guys can kind of see where I'm going. But that's what I'm kind of thinking. I'd like to have a little more discussion on where we go from here, but I'd like your input, too. Maybe I'm not seeing things as clear as I was three years ago, but I've got a few more things underneath my belt of seeing how managing 50 properties in Rapid City are not managed, I don't manage them, but having to take care of that many, there's a lot more to it than a person thinks. Maybe we need to do some organizational charts to kind of see what we need to do. Just my thoughts.
Mister Chair.
Commissioner Ross Koenig.
A lot of people don't see, Mike, you know, we see the exterior of the buildings, and we see the interior and how they're maintained, but a lot of people don't know that we got a jail with a failing infrastructure. You just don't move people around like that. And so I appreciate the fact that you, we're getting a study done to see how we're going to remedy that, and working with the Sheriff's Department to move forward with that project. That's just one of the things that a lot of people don't see, but it's a fairly major project. You don't want to have to build a new jail. We have to sit there and try to repair that infrastructure, so thanks for your participation on that.
Hello, Chairman.
Commissioner Adcock.
So this did go through HR, actually, with Mike. This wasn't anybody helping Mike with this. Basically, he went through HR to find out what the needs were. If that job description changes later, that's different. But even as leadership, when we went through before, those were the two things. And then I believe that Gary had met with HR as well to figure out what those were with Mike's needs. So I think they did do a study, and it hasn't been something that has been quick. It has been something that's been happening over a year. And I hadn't been involved with the process until later in the kind of process, but I just got on Buildings and Grounds Committee, and it looked like they wanted to move that forward. So that's why it moved forward with Gary taking the lead and working with Mike and the HR Department.
I appreciate that. I know that the Board has been very interested in help, showing their support in helping Buildings and Grounds as we're facing some growth challenges. You know, to speak to Commissioner LaCroy's comments, we're evolving, we're becoming a different, a much larger operation. We have a lot more things to cover. And to speak to a little bit of where Buildings and Grounds came from, it was strictly a maintenance department. We just addressed that. We are very much structured that way right now. The, and the challenges that we face right now is that we have, large organizations like this often have like a planning or design section to a department or something, and we really don't have much on that side of things. I have one person that can kind of do, but does not have the experience necessary for moving some of this big stuff forward and challenges. That's what I'm up against right now, and part of this process is, Buildings and Grounds has to evolve to support the new reality of Pennington County. And how that, how that happens is kind of a, you know, a bumpy ride as we work through this. But because of where we are with needs and such, that's why I'm seeking some help right now, because I do, Buildings and Grounds in terms of how we work and things, needs, as I noted, needs to evolve, and there needs to be some real attention placed on that. And that's, between that and commitment to major projects is just too much. So that's, that's why I'm looking for this assistance.
So Mike, you've been in that position for two and a half years now?
Yeah.
And if I recollect, and this was before my time of being on the Commission, I don't think your position was ever replaced at that point in time.
No, it was not.
So, so this is late coming. We've added a lot of new projects. This last year has been highly unusual with the COVID thing. Your staff has done really a truly amazing job for all of us during this period of time of keeping people safe. And so, and we know that we have big projects, and we've got legislation in right now that may bring another big project to your table. And so I don't think there's any doubt that the need is there for these two and quite potentially more. And I know that John and HR has been working with you on it, and appreciate that, John, for the effort that you put into it also. Is there anything, John, that you can add to this that? That's John Morrow's come forward.
Morning, Commissioners. John Morrow, Pennington County Human Resources. So Mike has been working with us to first analyze the job descriptions within the department, also the structure, the reporting responsibilities of that structure, and then also with regard to the projects that are currently in place but potentially coming online. So we're doing what we can to help get that in a structure that helps the employees be successful, but also allows Mike to be able to get the things done he needs to in that leadership role. It's a long process. As you saw, as we went through the wage study here the last couple of years, a couple of departments were able to restructure their entire department through that process. We didn't get that done for Mike, but we're working on doing that now so that it makes more sense based upon current and future needs. I mean, we're looking 10-plus years down the road. What's the best for that department? And Mike is very open-minded, great suggestions. It's been fun to work through. There's still quite a bit of work to do, so.
Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Further comments? Commissioner LaCroy.
Thanks, thanks, Mike and John, for your input. You know, by all means, I'm not trying to say no to these decisions. Alls I'm saying is getting some organizational, organizational charts and figuring out some stuff, because I know firsthand where the, where the, how things moved up and where they are today, and I know how key it is to have a person on the front line who, when an emergency comes up, they know who to call, da-da-da-da-da. And I see, see you, Mike, as I said, putting out a lot of fires, because you had to take on a lot of that, that you never had to before. I mean, you've been talking about going to school to do more stuff, more management training, more maintenance. Alls I, alls I was trying to say is there needs to be that type of a person below you that manages that type of stuff, is my belief. Maybe you've got one, maybe you got one identified, but I haven't seen that. When I first sat down with Mike Peterson, when I first got on the Commission, I asked for an organizational chart, and he started writing it out for me. You know what I'm saying? And so I know you've come a long ways, and, but just seeing how, I guess my vision of what your position is, is you're fantastic at project management and the overall management and something of a director type thing, and you have another person. How you guys have talked about and seen it, I'm not arguing with that. If that's the grand you're on, I'm just expressing how I think you're very key at the projects, and you know how to get them done. Other people have installed the equipment, done it, know it inside and out, maybe relieve a little bit that responsibility to someone else that can do that. Those are just some of my thoughts. I'm not, by all means, not saying these aren't necessary. I've been pushing for them for you for two years, so, you know.
Further discussion? I have a motion in a second to approve the two new FTEs for Buildings and Grounds. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried, unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mike.
Thank you, Mike.
Dustin Willett, backup. All things COVID, huh?
Good morning again, Commissioner. Dustin Willett, Pennington County Emergency Manager. So hopefully, just a brief COVID update this morning, and then happy to stand for any questions afterwards. The numbers are certainly better than some of the other times I've had to come here and report out. I think as of yesterday, we're at about 320-ish active cases in Pennington County. Our high in mid-November was well over 2,100, so that's a significant improvement. The last time that we saw numbers this low in the county was back in mid-September. So when you look at those graphs, when you look at the curve in Pennington County, there was quite the spike, and we are certainly, at this point with that, with that outbreak, we are on the solid downward side of that, of that spike. There certainly was discussion about what the spring and summer would look like in terms of additional cases. And right now, the question mark on most epidemiologists' mind is, is how effective is the vaccine going to be in terms of attenuating any future spikes or significant outbreaks across the country? So I don't think there's anything definitive on that yet. Certainly, the hope is that the vaccine distribution attenuates any, any additional significant spikes in cases. So the CDC ensemble outlook, which is pretty accurate for several weeks out, right now they're going through the middle of February, shows us continuing on a downward trend. So that being the case, there's the expectation that we'll see a slight bump from, from the number of people that we have in the community right now. You put more people in the community, there's the potential for, for additional spread between a few of those people. So we saw small bumps after Christmas, we saw small bumps after New Year's, we saw small bumps after, after Thanksgiving. So there may be a small, you know, bump in our downward trend, but overall, our numbers are forecasted to continue to decrease through, through the middle of February, which is good. In terms of vaccinations, just for Pennington County, we're over 8,000 folks in Pennington County have received the vaccine. A little over 6,000 of those have had their first dose, and then over 2,000 of those have had their second dose as well. So folks that follow all these numbers and whatnot in the news and the press will know that South Dakota is doing very well in its vaccine rollout nationally. So, so the folks at the Department of Health and Monument and there in Sanford and the other healthcare partners that are working on the vaccine distribution are pulling their weight. They're doing a good job. Currently, we're in the 1D priority, but it's not the full 1D. So anybody in the 1 Echo, 1 Bravo, 1 Charlie can still make appointments and get their vaccine, and then we're in this 1 Delta priority. We're looking at those that are 80 years old and over, those that are post-transplant, those that are being actively treated for cancer, and they're working on trying to reach out to the dialysis patients. So that's the block of people in 1 Delta that they're currently working on. The Department of Health and Monument Health have indicated that as more doses become available, they'll start dropping the age range. So right now, they're working on 80-plus, and I think the plan right now that I've heard is that they want to drop that in five-year increments, so the next batch would be 75, and then 70, and then 65, as, as those vaccines become available. In terms of folks that are interested in, in pursuing that, that vaccine, Monument did roll out their, their signup sheet, basically. It's online, and if folks don't have access to the computer, there's a phone number that they can call, but there is now a waiting list, basically, being generated and maintained by Monument Health. So it gives people a little more involvement, active involvement in, in planning for their, for their vaccination, rather than not knowing what's happening and, and waiting to be told. They can proactively go out and sign up on, on Monument's waitlist, and then there's a section on that waitlist, a drop-down box where you indicate what, what priority you're in based on your condition. So the hope is that, is that we work through most of the priorities in the, in the first phase by, by late spring, early summer. It would be fantastic to get through the 1 Deltas and 1 Echos all the way, again, moving into summer, and then just, the hope is that more vaccine is available, the manufacturers have ramped up. Monument currently is, is working- We've worked with, with Monument Health on some of the logistics of that move and, and hopefully getting them set up with the equipment that they, they want and need up at that Herberger site with the anticipation that that would be a, a large throughput for the general members of the, the, the community, the general population that want to move through there and get their vaccination. So things are going well there. Currently, I think 18 patients in the Monument system with, with COVID. So, you know, there was a time where we were over 100 and, and really, really, really stressing our, our healthcare. Healthcare has always been the, the drum that, that I've beaten when we're, we're up here. That's what we were trying to, to do is make sure that, that healthcare was able to deliver the services that needed to the community and, and they're certainly well positioned to do that now. So that's kind of an overview of, of COVID cases and vaccination in Pennington County. Certainly happy to stand for any questions.
Any questions? Commissioner Ross Connect.
Dustin, two questions. The first, for folks that have had the virus, what's the benefit of get, getting the vaccine? That's the first. And the second would be, is there any, what level of concern should we have with this new strain that I hear now we've got another strain overseas and just wondered what level of concern we should be carrying?
So those two questions, and, and just, just like everything COVID-related, the science is not settled, but they're actually an interrelated question set there. So why should somebody that's, that's previously had COVID receive the vaccination? And the key word there is reinfection. Not necessarily with, with even the same strain, although that did happen intermittently globally, the numbers were very, very, very small. But one of the things that, that the epidemiologists are concerned about, and again, there, there's not enough science, there's not enough data to, to speak definitively on it. But the concern is, I mean, viruses mutate, that's what they do, that's how they're built. And, and we always knew that was going to be a challenge with any emerging virus is, is how it mutates and, and how those mutations either undermine our, our containment efforts or what have you. And the issue that we're seeing now with some of the variants that are out there, and keep in mind, there are multiple mutations, the question is, how do they actually play out in human population? And the concern that we're seeing with a, a few of the variants that have been identified is the potential for reinfection. So folks that, that were, that successfully battled COVID in its original form seem to be susceptible to reacquiring that infection in one of its new variants. And how susceptible, how widespread that's going to be remains to be determined, but it, it seems to be a thing. It seems to be enough cases that, that, that they're concerned about it and tracking it. And the hope, and again, there's, there's data to support it, just not enough data to be conclusive. The vaccine is proving effective, not only in, in, in preventing the acquisition of some of the original variants of COVID, but even when somebody catches them, one of these new variants, when they've had the vaccine, the, just kind of like the, it's, it's akin to, to a lot of what happens with the flu vaccine. You can still catch the disease, but it doesn't, it's not as serious a case. So the hope at this point is that vaccination will keep you from getting a significant case of, of COVID. It would, again, attenuate those symptoms, reduce the, the need for hospitalization or, or medical care. So it's still very much encouraged to, to get vaccinated, even if you've recovered from COVID in the past.
I've had people ask, so I just thought I'd ask you now so that I can try to give them an answer.
Yep.
Thank you.
Any other questions, Dustin? Thank you, Dustin. Appreciate it. Next item up is Shannon Rittberger with Equazation.
Good morning Commissioners. So you have several abatement requests before you. This is the, the time of year where we do this every year. We have things that come up through last year that are ordinary and typical that we need an abatement for. A good example is the last one. Mobile Home was moved without a moving permits. We've got a building that didn't exist on the assessment date. We didn't know about it. We have houses that burned down. We have properties that are exempt and we can't fix that until the tax bill's printed. That happened at the end of the year. Now in January, we can deal with these and we've saved them up through last year. You'll see more of them. There, I think there's somewhere around 30, but these are within the county, so they come to the commission first. All of the others are going to Buck's Elder and Rapid City and whatever city council before they come here. So we'll be doing this for a couple of meetings and then we'll be passed abatements for a while. Do you have any questions on any of them specifically?
Any questions?
Nope.
Mr. Chair, do we vote on those separately or just as one item? I've read through it and they're all pretty self-explained and...
Yeah. I think we can vote on them all at one time.
Okay.
Chair.
Commissioner.
Move to approve the abatement application for the tax year 2020 for the following Zachary B. Gregor Parcel 8003 1,005 4822 Wheaton College Facilities Devil Parcel 19369 30,655 38 Duane A Nickel Trustee Parcel 64692 1,004 1882 Rapid Valley Sanitary District Parcel 11656 14864 Wheaton College Facilities Devil Development, I should put, but Parcel 5231 3,00687 56 Grant A Parsons Parcel 50905 1,00183 36 and Angel Gerald Parcel 8009739 $65 and 84 cents.
Second. Got a motion in a second. Further discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried unanimously.
Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Shannon. Item 16, Mark Schach, Highway Department.
Good morning, Commissioner. Mark Schach, Pennington County Highway. Come today with our annual bid request for authorization to advertise and let our supplies and materials for the 2021 year. We have several items, I think there's 11 here. We need these supplies to do our repairs and maintenance. One is aggregate materials, one is asphalt concrete composite. We also have asphalt maintenance materials, precast concrete pipe and bridge products, crack, I mean, cutback anti-musified asphalt, de-icing sand, fencing materials. We have guardrail, magnesium chloride solution, seating, fertilizing, mulching, and erosion control blanket, and timber bridge materials.
Chair.
Commissioner Edgard.
Motion is to request, whoops, motion. My motion is to authorize the Highway Department to advertise and let 2021 annual supplies and materials.
Second. Got a motion and a second. Further discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you.
B., item B.
Item B. is we are requesting authorization to advertise and let the following construction projects in 2021. The first project will be our asphalt surface treatment. Second project is asphalt surface crack sealing. We have a gravel planned gravel haul and place project in the wall area, far northeast corner of the county. We have a bridge repair planned for Old Hill City Road on Bridge Number 52 312 433. We also have a bridge repair project on Bridge Number 52 326 320, which is on High Seega Road. And we have bridge delamination repairs on the six bridges on Nemo Road. Also, I'd like to say we are, we are expecting to hear from the South Dakota DOT next month on several bridge projects or a couple of bridge projects that we have placed applications for bridge improvement grants. If we are successful, we will be coming for authorization to get those projects approved also.
Chair.
Commissioner Edgard.
Move to authorize the Highway Department to advertise and let 2021 annual construction projects.
There a second?
Second.
And a second. Further discussion? Mark, on those, talking about the bridge improvement grant applications, that's, those are separate from the original ones we put in or are these part of the, because didn't we put in like five requests to begin with?
We did, and...
And we've heard back on three of those, right?
We have. These two that were, were asking on today, High Seega Road and Old Hill City Road, they were rejected.
Okay.
From the bid, bridge improvement grant selection process. This being our first year involved, it's been quite a, a learning curve. And these bridges here are what we would consider simple deck replacements, similar to what we did on Nemo Road last year.
Okay.
And over the years, we have done most of the, the design engineering in-house on those because we replace deck units in kind. So it's a pretty simple process. And when we submitted our applications for that to, for DOT bridge improvement grants this year, they do require that bridge plans be engineered and stamped by a pre-approved engineering firm that's on the retainer list. And not knowing that, we, like I said, we, we submitted our in-house plans and they were rejected. These bridge projects are only going to be about $150,000 apiece, so it does not pay. It, it, it's more cost-effective for us to do that engineering in-house on these type of projects rather than hire someone. We could pay up to, you know, 50,000, up to $100,000 on engineering. So we can do the replacing kind in, in-house and do those projects with our funding that we have budgeted. And fortunately, we are, we are receiving wheel tax revenues now. We, we learned recently, Holly sent us a couple of days ago, a sheet showing that we're right at our, so far, we only have, we're one month into, to the revenue collections, mind you, but with the projected 1.3 million dollars that we plan to use for bridge projects, we're right on track or even a little bit ahead. In January, we received $110,000 and some, some odd change. So just one month there will pay for almost one of, a whole bridge project here. Well, we're estimating 150,000 on High Seega and on the Old Hill City. But these bridges are, are bridges that we don't feel can wait until next year either to put on, on the program, even if we did want to get them re-engineered. High Seega Bridge is currently reduced to a one-lane bridge and it's a, a single ingress/egress into High Seega Road. Those people have no other way in or out. So, and it was requested, we funded this out under 2020 inspections that we, we needed to do that. And it was also requested that it be inspected every 12 months rather than the federally required 24 months. So this bridge is, is desperate, desperately needed to be reconstructed or deck replacements, I should say, and to make sure those people have a safe ingress/egress. The other bridge is on Old Hill City Road. That has weight restrictions on it. We cannot get our snow plows over, over that bridge legally. And unfortunately, a planned agreement with the City of Keystone to do snow removal on that end of the road was not accepted by Keystone. So right now, we have to go around and that delays our snow removal efforts on, on that bridge.
Thanks, Mark. I think, I, I don't think we've even talked about it on the dais here, but about 10 days ago, I think the Department of Transportation did approve three of our bridge projects. I don't know what the total dollar amount for those was, but I think two of those bridges amount to about $700,000 each. And I don't know what the third one, what that dollar amount was with, with the third one, but, and that's only because we was able to apply through the big fund, I believe, by having the wheel tax in place.
Those bridges, I think you're talking about are the ones on Paulson Road.
I believe so, yeah.
Heather Road.
Yeah.
And those were, that was actually federal funding. That was made available based on county's square footage of, of deck that's in the county. We have, we have 127 bridges and I, I don't know what that square footage of, of deck is, but we are ranked by, by that square footage of deck that is, decks that are insufficient. And we applied for three replacements for that funding and we are awarded for three bridge replacements. They will be, the, the design will be in 21 and the construction 22 and 23, I believe, on those.
And I think that's 85% funding that's available to us. So we only have to put up 15% on, on those.
Correct.
Chairman.
Commissioner Edgard.
I think you should put on either the county website or the Highway Department, the big projects that you ended up getting for the grant, so people know that, you know, we weren't just, you know, putting it out there like it wasn't a big deal and how many more projects with this big grant that we could do for our community. I think that would be a positive to show where their tax dollars are going and that it did make a huge difference for us and we appreciated it.
Good idea.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Ross Connect.
Mark, you know, that 50 to $100,000 for engineered drawings, I mean, if a bridge costs 700,000, we're paying that much. My question is, if we, a lot of these bridges were replaced in 1972 after the flood and they're, they're very similar to each other, like the one in New Underwood, which we replaced with a, a deck that we had the pre-engineered drawings for Brasky Road. So my question is, can, if we do some engineered drawings for one bridge and it's similar to another bridge, do we have to spend another $100,000 for another set of engineered drawings? Or can we use the same engineered, probably use the same engineered drawings for multiple bridges?
Well, the, the engineers' plans, they, they take into the, the channel size, the channel depth, the, the location of that bridge to the channel. There are a lot of factors. The, the hydraulics that are coming down to that bridge, there's, there's a lot of factors involved. So they, they want to study each bridge individually. And I guess that's understandable and that's what we plan to do is apply for preliminary engineering grants on the big bridge projects that require replacement and, and large engineering projects for those bridges. We were unable to do that this year. The wheel tax was, came into effect, I think, July 2nd, I think it was. And for the preliminary engineering grants, applications had to be received in peer by August 1st. So there was no time to, to get to start any of those projects, but ideally for the, the large engineering projects, we would submit engineering design plans the year prior to construction grant applications. And it will help Pennington County offset those, those costs. The smaller deck replacements, we'll just continue to do in-house and there really is no hydraulics or, or major design changes. It's just replacing kind. We can save money by doing those ourselves.
Relative to the big grant, if we don't spend the one, if we get 1.3 and we don't spend it in 2021, can it be carried over to the next year for the projects?
Could you repeat that? I'm not sure I understood what you're saying.
You're talking about the money worth collecting?
If we, if we generate 1.3 million in revenue relative to the wheel tax, if it's not spent... if it's not spent in the year, that current fiscal year, can it be carried over to the next year? I guess that was my question.
It can be because that's budgeted dollars. So, yeah, that's not an issue.
Yeah.
Those revenues just go to the Highway Department for, for road and bridge repairs. If there's, if and when there's revenues that are left over from year to year, we deposit those in our reserve funds.
Okay, that was my question.
And that's, we, that's where we pay for the other projects and then we could take that out the next year. Yes.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Pass unanimously. Item C, Mark. Thunderhead Falls Road Bridges.
Uh, Thunderhead Falls, we, the South Dakota DOT requires that, or is requesting a utility certificate be completed for the bridges. We do have applica-, big grant applications in this year. Those two bridges are on Thunderhead Falls. And it, it basically just says that we have contacted the utility companies and guarantee that utilities will not be in conflict with the reconstruction of the bridges. We have to do that with most DOT projects.
Commissioner Adka.
Move to approve utility certificates for anticipated bridge improvement grant projects on Thunderhead Falls Road for 52-316-316 and 52-317-318.
Second.
And a second for the discussion. All those in favor indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion, opposed? Motion carried unanimously. Thank you, Mark. Appreciate it.
Mark.
Thank you, Mark.
John Morrell, you're up. Human Resources. Employee Handbook Update.
Good morning, Commissioners. John Morrell, Pennington County, Human Resources. So there's no action required on this. This is basically an informational notice. We, last complete update of the handbook was done in 2014. When I came on board in 2018, we did update the handbook and introduced a few new policies. What we'll be doing now, though, is actually reviewing the entire handbook, every single policy, to make sure that they still apply in our current environment of county operations. We're also, and, and this is the thing I'm probably more interested or excited about, we're going to change the formatting of the handbook so that you'll see actually attached to the memo was a sample. Each policy will have its own separate page. So we'll still have the table of contents, but it won't be the type of handbook we have now where they just sequentially all run in a single document. And then if you make a change to one, you end up changing the formatting for all of those that follow. This will allow us to actually update the policy as a standalone policy and not require a review of the entire handbook. We're going to have a, a team of people, we're going to have a committee forum to go through this, just as we did when we updated the travel policy and the attendance policy and those types of things. But they're going to take a, a deep dive look at every one of the policies we have in the handbook. So with that, if there's any questions, I'll, I'll scan.
Questions of John.
Chairman.
Yes, Commissioner Adka.
Just in case in July 2nd that we're moving forward on drug policies, are you guys working with the Sheriff's Office and Steph and those guys to get prepared for what might happen?
Yes, ma'am. Commissioner, yes, we, we met with the sheriff and with Stephanie a couple of months ago. We've been actually reviewing a policy with regard to drug use in a drug-free workplace. There's going to be some changes again made after further discussions. Once we have that ready, we'll take it back to the department heads for review and then bring it back to this body as well. So yes, we are preparing for that.
Well, Steph's very intelligent that way on doing a lot of changes for what they need in the Sheriff's Office with drug policies and different things that he needs. So that would be a good reference to.
For the most part, the department heads were, were favoring the changes. So it was a very positive discussion with them when we met last month. I, I think as we get it more refined, there'll be more support.
And they've been dealing with it a long time.
Yes.
Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Item number 18, Keystone XL Pipeline Project Support. And this is coming from me. I'd received, and maybe all of us had received that, a note from Trevor Jones from XL Energy encouraging us to, if we were supportive of the Keystone Pipeline, that we encourage support through letters to our congressional delegation and our governor. And so those letters have been prepared and will be sent upon the approval of this commission. Any questions on it?
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead, Lloyd.
Commissioner LaCroy.
Mr. Chairman, I've been pretty strict on, with my employers as far as anything that comes up with them abstaining from anything that, I know this does not have to do with financial or anything about him elected official. And both me and my wife both work for a company that does manage oil and so forth. So I, ethically, I'm going to abstain.
Okay.
Chairman.
Commissioner Adka.
So I'm in support of this because of the eight thousand jobs and the nine hundred million in gross union wages. Basically, bottom line is, this is a lot of people with a lot of jobs that are well-needed. So again, pipeline will generate more than two billion US wages and add 3.4 billion to the US GDP during construction. A lot of small towns in Pennington County in different areas that can go, people can go get jobs on this pipeline. It's huge in South Dakota. So I also believe that it was a good idea to bring this forward and that we show our support that our people need that economic development in Pennington County.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Ross.
My only remark on this is that these folks have never got as far as they did. I mean, they're in it very deep right now. And there's, like Deb said, now we got jobs and infrastructure. And to pull the rug out, out of underneath them at the last minute, I, I don't agree with that. I, I'm all about being conservative in a certain nature. But I think we're too deep in to not support this now. So I will personally support it.
Thank you, Commissioner. Further, further discussion?
Chairman.
Commissioner Adka.
Move to continue support of Keystone XL Pipeline Projects and send letters to Governor Noem and Congressional Delegation, urging their continued support.
Second.
And I have a second. Further discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
No? Motion carried with one abstention. Commissioner LaCroy. Items from Commission Manager Holly Hennies.
First item in front of you today, Commissioners, is a request to purchase thank you cards for use by the Board of Commissioners, either as a group or individually. There's just a policy dating back on record quite a number of years ago that prohibits stationary for elected officials. And we'd like to request an exemption to that and order thank you cards from the Commissioners.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Ross Connect.
I, I, personally, I'd like to be able to buy these cards myself so I can send thank you cards out to the departments and organizations, volunteers. I don't expect that to come out of the county budget, but I would like for me to be able to order those through the county at my expense. So this mentions that the funds would come out of our account. And I'll be, if I do this, I'd like to, I don't want it to be a cost of the taxpayers. I want it to come from my heart and I'll do it myself.
So, uh, one second. So Holly, could we, could we as a county order the cards? And then as, as Commissioner Ross Connect suggests, if, if we as Commissioners want to utilize those, that we can just purchase those from the county? So the cost is reimbursed? Okay, Commissioner LaCroy.
I, I struggle with this. And, and the reason why I struggle with it is because, I mean, thanks, Ron, you're saying that, you know, you're, you would buy them, but you're going to put the Pennington County logo on there and then you could be able to use them any way you see fit. You know, you, you say to department heads or to other people. But I'll, I'll bring up an instance of an elected official who gathered addresses from employees. I'm not talking about us, but it's something I know. They gathered and they sent letters to the employees of whoever, using that, those letterheads as, not what's intended. I think Deb knows what I'm talking about. That's what my fear is this. I think our intentions are very well. But five years down the road or three years, we get a different commission. They could use those letterheads to their own gain for campaigning or whatever they want to do. You know, that was one of the restrictions that I requested when we did speaker request forms was we want that information to be able to contact that person if, to follow up. But that the Commissioners not get that address to be able to use or anybody else for a political use. I, I know where you're going, Ron, but I can't support this right now without more discussion because I just don't see, I, I've seen the misuse of it. And I don't know how a person could do a safeguard at this point to make me feel better about doing that.
Mr. Chair.
You know, I, I, I think, you know, we could purchase our own, but, and, and, and do the thank you notes. I think that's more from the heart than you, than getting a generic card and send them out. That's just my thoughts.
So I'm, I'm just thinking, I, you get letters from the Senator Thune and Mike Brownson, they're, they're elected, elected officials. And, and that was where I was going. I, you know, but I can certainly see your point where they could be misused. And maybe this is something that we ought to just table and talk about it later.
Want to postpone indefinitely?
Yep.
Got a motion?
Motion to postpone indefinitely.
Got a motion to postpone indefinitely. Is there a second?
Thank you.
Further discussion?
One, just, just one thing, Chairman. I think you can do the thank yous. We do it all the time, you know, to the departments and things. And it just makes it, I'm, I'm agree with Commissioner LaCroy that it just makes it less, you know, politically looking in one sense, even though that's not this commission's heart or Ron Ross Connect's heart. So I agree that we can keep doing our thank yous and do what we do. And then as a letter, as a body, then write letters to congressional and other people as well as a team. So, thank you.
Further discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Okay, item B is Commissioner Recommended Functions. And what this is, Commissioners, is to seek approval of a guiding document identifying the recommended functions of a county commissioner. This is essentially a job description, but we didn't want to use that term. But this would be used to submit for the elected official's wage study that will be coming up shortly this year. So with that, I'll stand with any questions. I used the language that's in South Dakota statute as well as trying to write it so that it makes sense for what current day responsibilities are for a county commissioner.
I think you did a very good job of putting all the information together. Any, any discussion? Commissioner Adka.
Move to approve the county commissioners' recommended functions guiding document dated February 2nd, 2021.
Second.
And a second. Further discussion?
Chairman.
Commissioner Adka.
Thank you, Holly, for this and John, for moving forward that way. The community can see, you know, comparables, what we do. We have found out from other commissioners, you know, and people in our public thinking we had just two meetings a month. It kind of shows all the things we do and all the committees we're on and all the sideline things that we help with our community in every sense for Pennington County and to show the work that we do in basically the job description. Thank you very much, Ms. Holly.
Thank you. Commissioner LaCroy.
Well, I, I just wanted to echo Deb's stuff. I mean, most of you guys know I, I like job descriptions and, and this is great. I mean, I, I think that gives structure and gives people the idea of what they need to do. And I, I think we didn't really have that before. But I really appreciate you guys coming together with this because that really helps a person out a lot more than they think. So I appreciate it.
I got a question for Commissioner Lassiter. So you've been on here now for a month. So are you doing as many things as you thought you'd be doing?
I'm doing a little bit more than what I thought I was doing. And actually, it's not quite technically a month. We're not to the 5th of February yet. So yes. And yes, you're right. I, I've done quite a bit more than I was expecting that would happen in, in that shorter period of time, that's for sure.
We'll ask you the same question 11 months from now.
Okay, that's fair.
Okay, so I've got a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Okay.
Item C.
Third item is to seek direction from the Board of Commissioners. We do have a position on the Pennington County Housing and Redevelopment Commission that will be open, or actually will be expiring in April. And I know at the last appointment, there was discussion about appointing another county commissioner to that board. And the way the calendar falls, I would need direction from the board if you would like me to open that again to seek citizen interest or if you would like to go another direction.
Holly, it's my intent as the chairman to propose that we appoint another member of this body to that. And so I would suggest we not open it up to the public. Commissioner Adka.
So I would suggest we appoint Ron Ross Connect to, um, the next, in the next meeting. Is that when we had to do it, Holly? On 2/16 to the Pennington Housing Authority? Right now, there's some huge projects going forward that could make a difference. I can honestly say the director that was appointed is doing a great job. He's moving forward on many projects and, and they talk about affordable and it's not affordable, subsidized. There's a difference. And so those subsidized projects, that, the board that's been on there has done a really good job. But I think there needs to be a little bit more, I don't know what the word is. But I think Ross Connect and I and that committee and your new director, working with Barry and a lot of the community partners could find some areas. We do have land on the Pennington County Housing Authority. I am on the Pennington County Housing Authority right now. That would be pretty exciting for Pennington County in this area for subsidized housing. So not that Sherry ever did a bad job. She never did. She does a good job. But I think we just need a little bit more stronger voice on there to move us forward and ahead in the future. And there's some huge needs for subsidized housing. And I think we can do it as a team of people with Ron Ross Connect helping us as well.
The position expires in April. So if that's the direction of the board, I will bring back the appointment closer to that expiration date to make sure that the meetings fall appropriately.
Mr. Chair. I, I appreciate the discussion, but I think it's all about process. And with the, this is a five, five-member board, the housing, so that's five. So if, if we bypass the process and put another commissioner on there, we've got one-third of, a person could say we got one-third of the board, county commissioner.
No.
If it's five.
I will respectfully disagree. Statute is very clear that the governing body can appoint up to two members.
Up to two.
So that there is not a quorum from the governing body.
Well, no, I'm not saying they'd have a quorum, but two out of fives, a pretty good number.
Still not a quorum.
Well, you know what I'm saying too.
I do.
I, I'm thinking about the process. And even when we appointed Deb, you know, that was a deal where one resigned in the middle of their deal and, and so we were appointing. This one, this one's expiring. Am I correct or this?
Just expiring.
Expiring. And the process was to take application and see what comes forward. So I mean, I, I'm part of this board. I won't know for the, for us appointing one because I believe in the process. Taking applications in and seeing who's interested. That's all I'm saying.
Okay, further discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Ross.
I got involved with this particular organization, you may call it a complaint basis. And then other items evolved. And although I'm not formally a commissioner, I've been to a number of meetings as a concerned citizen. And I'm very much understanding the process. And if the commission wishes me to step up, I'll, I'll accept that offer. Because I do think we can make a difference. If you look at what's happened to that organization in the last two years, it's a lot of changes. And, and what I see now, they're very positive changes and we want to keep it that direction.
So Chairman.
Commissioner Adka.
I respect Commissioner LaCroy in the process. And if we go through the process, knowing that the board wants to appoint Ron in that sense, why play the game? So I would rather you tell me upfront where we're going instead of later on just saying, okay, I just went through the motion. So I understand the process, but I don't know if if we go forward on 216 to see if we want to appoint or if we want to go through the process. Maybe that's more what we put on there. So we don't play the game on somebody when when we want to have another commissioner on there. I don't know what the wish of all the board is, but it sounds like three of us are there. So I don't know if we do that to somebody instead of being straightforward. That's that's where I'm at because I I want people to be straightforward with me, what's, you know, what's coming forward on me, so.
Yeah, and it's 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 not about playing a game. It's the reason I brought it forward is just so if that's the intent of the board and the county policy allows the board to vary from the policy of going through and gathering citizen interest forms if if a special condition or a deviation is necessary. So I just, again, didn't want to waste anybody's time if, based on the last discussion, if that was the wish of the board. I'm more than happy to do whichever. It's just the way the calendar falls.
Yeah.
And their meetings fall. I needed to get some direction from the board, just to follow.
I I agree with you, Holly, and I think we are following what state statute sets out. We're saying we're following our policy. Uh, this is the intent of myself, at least, that we appoint another one of our own members to that board. And so I would like to see us move forward on it. Commissioner LaCroy?
Oh, I just saying, policy-wise, I was from the first one. Because you don't, you know, I'm not saying my mind is made up. I know he's interested and I think some of the commissioners are too. But without opening it up to the public, who's to say who's who's better? Maybe there is somebody out there. You know, I'm not gonna, we have that right to appoint them. If that's the intent of the commission is to have at least two commissioners on there, then we should probably have a policy for that or, you know, I'm not, I'm all about the procedures. I open game on if some people's minds are made up of what they want, good for you, not me. I'm just following the policy because I have nothing else in front of me.
So Chairman.
That's all I'm.
Commissioner Adcock?
Nope, I believe in the process, but at this point, I also believe that this board needs to for move forward in their process. And I think I'm not doing that because I'm trying to discount anybody. I'm I'm putting forward by watching and being on that board, how we can move forward for it. It's about the people on Pennington County Housing Authority and who's going to fit best to get them their subsidized housing and get some changes. And I believe at this point that, based on policy, and I've listened to Holly about the policy, that's why I'm I'm saying this, that this board could help them and then later on, maybe we could just, you know, not be on there anymore once the process is moving forward. But we got to get them to get that process moving forward a little bit. Again, it's about what I've seen that it makes me very excited if we could get them to move to that next step. And I think with your, from the last meeting, Brian Akbak is your new director. He's going out in the community. They haven't done that in a long time. He's working, he's taking classes of how to do some subsidized housing, how to work with partners in our community. Like I said, I think based on moving forward, I think two commissioners at this point, not to be political on there, but to actually do something really exciting to help this board. I have a passion to see subsidized housing in in, I don't know if it's Rapid City, but the surrounding area. It doesn't have to be Rapid City, Pennington County. It can be pretty exciting to see what we can do for people that need our help. So I think to me, Ron is that that guy who has the passion and everything. And if we do the process, like you said, I'm good either way. But I just I just seen Ron at in the last year or so before we were on the board. He just has the same passion of of these people that he'll be helping. And that's what that's what we need, someone with some fire and 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 someone with some compassion.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner LaCroy?
Just just for clarification, to move forward, uh, would the motion be to vote on follow? Policy, you vote on that first and then go to a second one? You know, I mean, it's kind of sounds like it's kind of getting intermixed where we're doing Ron right now. We should be.
Policy is already there. Policy is already there. I don't I don't think we need to change the policy to do this.
Okay, so that's pretty much what it is, the policy that's on the floor right now. I mean, there's no motion on the floor, but to vote on the policy, which means all of us would be able to vote on that.
Policy exists to allow the board to deviate. It's already there. So today's motion.
I would suggest that today's motion be that move the place, have the commission office place on the next meeting the appointment of Commissioner Ron Ross Connect to the Pennington County Housing and Redevelopment Commission.
I'll second that.
Got a motion and a second. Further discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carried four to one. Uh, Leader LaCroy, no. Next item is D.
Item D, Commissioners, I just wanted to bring to your attention the South Dakota Department of Transportation in collaboration with Rapid City, Pennington County, and the Rapid City MPO is seeking public comments for the US 16 corridor study from January 30th through February 28th. I'm seeking direction from the board if you wish to submit comments on behalf of Pennington County and what those comments would be in order to prepare them to bring them back for the meeting on the 16th for final approval.
I believe, and I'll have to ask Mark. Mark, do you know if if Highway is planning on making comments relative to that?
Uh, yes, we will make comment on that. We're in the process of review or we'll start process of review here shortly. We have been in contact with DOT and been to a few of their meetings. It does involve some of our roads, namely Neck Yoke Road is one, Wilderness Canyon Road, Strata Bowl, South Rockerville, and Silver Mountain Road. So there will be intersecting county roads within this corridor. So, yes, we would definitely will be revealing and making comment.
What I would suggest then is that you provide us with a copy of your comments and that we write a letter in support of what the Pennington County Highway Department has submitted. And if any commissioners have any particular thoughts that they want added to that, that should be shared with Holly for the drafting of our letter.
Second.
Got a motion and a second.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Ross Connect?
Uh, just to show you how transparent this process is and how people, they've put their comments in. Mark, didn't you mention last week that they changed the configuration of the junction to Neck Yoke in one day?
I don't think you realize you you were talking to him.
Mark.
Mark.
I was telling on the commission, you know, that the people's comments on this corridor study, didn't you say in one day DOT changed the configuration of the Neck Yoke intersection?
They've had several different options proposed for those.
Right.
The most recent one, I saw the other day, it it changed within a short period of time. So they they would take our comments into consideration. It's still in the process of of final draft or preliminary draft, actually. Even though the study has been going on, I think, two years now. But the current design at Neck Yoke right now is a little concerning to us. I don't know. It would involve some some property need needing right of way negotiation. So we'll definitely comment on that and see see what they think of our comments.
Yeah, I'm just trying to stress the importance for people to, if they're concerned about this, this is their opportunity to get on that website and express their concerns because once that's decided, it's going to be too late. That's the point that I'm trying to make.
You are correct. Their public comments really do really are considered and do make change in plans. I I have learned that over the years, whether it's state, county, federal projects. Public comment is is very important. So if people, I, we would definitely encourage people that have concerns on on the, especially the county intersections in that corridor to to make comment.
Well, as that's my district, I just appreciate to keep me in the loop and and I'll start a file on Highway 16 corridor and and review your comments and whatever you can provide me with updates.
Yes, we will get them to the commission.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Okay, Commissioner LaCroy?
Mark?
Quit trying to run.
There may be wrong to answer this. You know, back when I was on MPO, what if they come up with, or what's the talks with the over/under on 16 and Canton? They did away with the over/under and at one time they were talking about the over/under.
On 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 what was?
Highway 16 and and Canton.
It's going to be a single point interchange.
Oh, yes. I guess, to be honest with you, I don't know what that that decision is on that one. We haven't, I personally haven't paid attention to anything north of Neck Yoke that does not affect our roads. And these these meetings that go back and forth, there's a lot of comment with their people and and a lot of changes made. So we've just been kind of concentrating on on the ones that affect Pennington County highways.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Ross.
With my correspondence with the DOT, they're they're leaning towards what they call a single point interchange. And that would be very similar to the one on I-90 in Haynes. So one one light would control traffic all four directions.
Isn't that what we have now?
Yeah.
Uh, this would be an overpass.
That's the.
Like Haynes Avenue. Is from what I understand.
I'll I'll evaluate, but thanks. I was kind of curious. I seen the designs at one time that over like 16 would be going over and Canton would be going.
That's my understanding. That's what they would, they were looking at that, going that direction.
Oh.
I'm not sure what the final is now, but they wanted that traffic on Highway 16 to be uninterrupted.
Yep, okay.
So it'd be like the Highway 79 intersection with.
Right, okay.
Okay.
Makes sense.
Any other questions? Okay, I've got a motion then to direct staff to prepare comments for submission for the US 16 corridor study with the county's position being supportive of the highway department's review.
Second.
And a second. No, I got a second. Commissioner LaCroy, a second. Uh, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried unanimous. Item E, Holly. Thank you, Mark.
Thank you, Mark. Item E is also an opportunity for Pennington County to submit comments on the potential revisions to the Metropolitan Statistical Areas. I'm going to have to look towards the commissioners that sit on the MPO of what this truly means and what this affects. But my understanding is making a change to how they look at population, which would filter down and change how like items like the Community Development Block Grants and things like that are awarded.
So Chairman, sorry.
Commissioner Adcock?
Bottom line is that the Metropolitan Statistical Area status, they want to take us to micro, which would not be good. Meaning we get less grants, less money, less help. So bottom line, they base it, like Holly said, on growth. But we've seen lately, because of COVID and and different things, a lot of people are changing Pennington County and the surrounding western South Dakota pretty fast. So I'm in favor of this, Holly. I thank you. I don't know if you brought this forward, but moving forward and having us write a letter that we are not in favor, it looks like. Also, the Metropolitan Planning Organization isn't in favor either, so.
To oppose.
Yes, I think it's a good thing to oppose it and tell them why that because of COVID, because of other areas. Pennington County has had a substantial amount of growth this year.
I'll move.
Got a motion by Commissioner LaCroy to oppose, to prepare comments for submission for proposed revisions to the Metropolitan Statistical Areas Program with the county's position being opposed.
Second.
And a second for the discussion. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you.
For the five-minute, for the five-minute recess?
Yep.
Motion to take five.
Got a motion. Is that a second?
Second.
And a second. Uh, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Calls meeting back to order. Okay, next item up is Legislative Session, 2021 Legislative Session. Just working on a couple of bills here coming up before committee tomorrow that I think Jay Alderman is going to the state's attorney's office will handle for us.
Chairman, you have item 20, but I don't know if you are just going to move it into 22? Just the items from chair and commission members, but we could probably put it into 22.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. Uh, yes, let's go back to item 20, items from the chair and commission members.
Okay, next.
I'm good. This would be anything outside of the normal committee courts and so forth. Okay.
Mr. Chair, I'll just expand.
Commissioner Ross Connect?
We got to go up this weekend to the Walleye's Unlimited Fishing Tournament held at Sheridan Lake. And last year I asked if we could get the SHIRP, which is our emergency management vehicle up there for the general public to see. Last year, there was 160 teams at that tournament with two folks per team. This year, there was 145. The SHIRP really impressed a lot of people and until you get in that vehicle and you go off the ice into the water and off out of the water onto the ice, you really can't fathom what that machine will do. So I think it was a really good investment considering the other options were a lot more expensive. And and you know, I was just want to thank our search and rescue for coming up there and spending their time showing off a pretty amazing machine.
Thank you, Commissioner Ross Connect. Okay, now we'll go to the legislative. And I give you just a little bit of a quick update here from my side of it. Yesterday, I had the opportunity to testify before the House Military and Veterans Affairs Committee on House Bill 1019. This is the one that would appropriate $3.2 million for the new facility at Box Elder to be used jointly by the airbase and the city of Box Elder as a joint military community center. So that bill was then moved from Military Affairs over to appropriations since it carries the appropriations bill. It went to the House Appropriations and so they will be taking that up next before it and then if it receives a favorable approval letter, it'll go on to the House before it goes to the Senate side. And I presume it's going to have to go through both committees there too, both Military and Veterans Affairs and back to the Senate Appropriations Committee at that point in time. Normally, most of these would go to a joint appropriations committee, but this one didn't happen that way. So then this followed last week when Ron and I were in Pierre along with Joe Miller. We attended a meeting with the governor last week relative to this particular piece of legislation. And then actually, all of the the planned improvements around Ellsworth Air Force Base and Box Elder. And it was a good meeting. I think there'd be some good ideas, some good plans that that come out of that. Senate Bill 150 and Senate Bill 142. One is on the meeting location, allowing us to have our public meetings in this building rather than the courthouse. There's at least five other counties that are be impacted by this. And then the other one is to clarify and put the penalty back in on the fireworks issue. Senators Dehamel and Castleberry are respectively carrying those bills. And these are the two that are up before House Local Government Committee tomorrow. House Local Government Committee tomorrow and, uh, I mean, Senate Local Government Committee tomorrow, and Jay Alderman will, uh, testify on behalf of those. And then Senator Dehamel's also carrying the request from the governor to provide the four point six million for the mental health crisis facility located adjacent to the care campus. Uh, that bill will be, uh, uh, coming up for committee hearing, uh, soon. Don't know the date on that yet. And then, um, House Bill ten fifty-eight, we talked about that a couple of weeks ago. This was the one that provided for recall of county commissioners. Uh, however, I think the legislature was convinced that there are already, uh, statutes that allow for the removal of a county commissioner if the need arises. And so that bill was killed in the House Local Government Committee. There's a number of other bills we're watching, including a number of bills proposing to make exceptions to property taxes. Uh, at the Crackerbell Session on Saturday, I suggested to legislators that we've got at least four bills that would, uh, remove certain items from, um, property taxation. And so I just suggested instead of doing a piecemeal on amendments on those, that the legislature, it's about time the legislature maybe take a comprehensive look at all of the, uh, taxation, uh, legislation and, uh, especially on agriculture property. And I know there's other bills that are gonna have possibly some impact on us. Uh, Holly, I'm gonna give you a number of one, uh, that I just received about five minutes ago from one of our legislators asking for input. Uh, it's a bill that I have not seen. And so, um, I will, I don't see it right offhand here. It just came in. Um. I'll get that bill number to you if you would just pull that up and do a little research on it when you get a chance. So, and that was, uh, Representative Olson, Jess Olson is the one that was asking, uh, for our input on that particular bill. I don't even know what the subject matter is. Anything else relative to legislature?
I'd just like, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner LaCroy.
I'd just like to express my appreciation of you and Ron going down there and speaking on behalf of ten nineteen and, um, uh, being a part of that. I mean, uh, that's where those bills were. I think, you know, we've got county, city, state, we got a chance for all of us to be a part of it. So, uh, appreciate guys making that trip to represent us.
Some of those things coming up at the last minute. We had less than twenty-four hour notice on that.
Yeah.
Had to be at the table, so. Okay? Anything else relative to legislative stuff? Sheriff Tom.
Just one follow-up comment on the Crisis Stabilization Unit. That hearing got set, I think, yesterday. It'll be tomorrow morning, ten central, nine, Mountain, uh, Senate Health and Human Services. And I interest three or four of us from here, they're gonna testify remotely in support of that. So just FYI.
Very good. Thank you. Ten o'clock tomorrow?
Correct, uh, central, yep.
Yep. Thanks, Kevin. Appreciate that. Okay, now, um, we'll go to committee reports. Start with Travis.
All right. So adding on to all that work that I did this first month, uh, I did a lot of learning. So it was really good and fun to be at a lot of these places. The first one I'm talking about is the Rapid City Public Library Board. Um, it was a pretty short meeting, but, uh, interestingly enough, there was a conversation about the mandatory mask at the, uh, Rapid City Public Library and being able to, um, uh, maybe change the policy, not in, in, in effect of removing masks, but having some exceptions. Um, so January twenty-fifth, the, uh, Rapid City Public Library actually piloted a program of allowing individuals who had medical exemptions to be able to come into the library showing the medical exemptions and then still have access to the library. So when I went over and visited with Terry, we talked about that and, you know, she thought there could have been some concern and, um, but so far it has gone off without any major problems at that point in time. So at our next board meeting, we're gonna just kind of review and see what has transpired and on February eighth and see if there's anything that we need to do to tweak it and things that matter. So that's probably the biggest thing out of that, that board meeting. Plus I got a good tour of the, of the operations of the library. My family and I have visited the library many a times, but I kinda got to see the backside of it and see how things operate. So it was pretty good, pretty good information there. Uh, Planning Commission, I don't think I have anything major from, from our meeting on there. Uh, then, I don't know, let's see, the Community Health Center. Um, my connection was bad whenever I was on that meeting, so I didn't get a lot of information. Um, I do know that they're looking at, what I was able to hear and whatnot with that connection, is they're actually looking at trying to, uh, turn their COVID clinic into the vaccine side of, so they're getting ready to drum up for that, even considering doing a, uh, secondary access door so that individuals can come in over there without having to come through the entire, uh, the clinic on, over there. So, uh, out of that, that was pretty much what I got out of there. And then I knew I don't have it listed on here, but I would just like to touch on the, uh, meeting I had with, uh, Sheriff Tom and the individuals about the fireworks. Uh, so sat down, had a good, um, history with, um, Sheriff Tom and the others that were in that, in that, in that meeting. And, uh, I've reached out and made contact with the individual that was discussing it. So I don't know how, I, I know it wasn't necessarily taken, um, favorably, the information I gave him back. Um, but I did let him know the, the process that they could do to move forward with, uh, how they feel that that should go forward. And so they didn't necessarily like that answer either. Um, but I'll keep you updated if I hear back from the individual or any others concerning that. I haven't heard from anybody else concerning that particular issue at this moment in time, but I did tell the individual to, um, send them my way if she, if that individual had a lot of, um, other individuals that wanted to express their, the concern at this moment in time and haven't heard any at, at this moment. So, um, but I thought it was a really good informational piece for me to have the background of all the, um, the fireworks stuff and then being able to present that information to the individual so they could work forward with that one.
Oh, Chairman.
Uh, Commissioner, I had to go.
Um, Travis, did you go to any, um, stock show events?
Yes, I went to the ribbon cutting and I was just there, um, yesterday just to kind of peruse the vendors, talk to the vendors while I was there as well. Um, a lot of them are really happy that they're able to come here and they've had a lot of business just in the short period of time that they've been here. And one of the vendors is actually struggling with having enough, um, uh, product. So they're actually maybe getting some extra product shipped in solely to accommodate the individuals that are wanting their product. So that was a.
Nice, that's a nice problem.
Pretty, pretty, pretty good, pretty good feedback. And yes, it was a good problem for them to have. Uh, the other thing I was, I was flipping through my notes here too. Uh, there was also a meeting at, in Wa, uh, in New Underwood about wall meets. And they announced New Underwood as the, the place that they wanna play in their new, uh, meat, um, processing plant as well. So it seemed to be pretty well received by the local community. Uh, I think just a curtry number of individuals that were in the room was more than what was at Wall whenever they were, you know, kinda given a preliminary. And I think it was about a hundred eighty to a hundred individuals were in the room. It seemed pretty well received. So.
Awesome.
We, we, I'm sure we'll be hearing more on that 'cause we've got some more meetings scheduled for February, uh, informational meetings, and then some investor meetings in March.
That's gonna be pretty awesome if you can get that.
It'll be pretty neat out there.
Yep, good economic development as well.
And something that we need in the state. So.
Yeah.
Gary and I get to sit through their presentation. And when you see the processing numbers of, you know, how much cattle we have and how much processing we have, uh, we don't have a lot of processing for all the cattle that we have. And, and this will help increase our processing capabilities so that we can have our, our cattle grown here and processed here.
And isn't western South Dakota more cattle and eastern is more farming? Or is that not true?
I think that's, I think that's what I understand as well. Most of the cattle's out this way.
Couldn't have better, picked a better location for doing the processing for the cattle then.
Absolutely. So.
Good job.
Pretty, pretty eventful, um, couple of weeks for me, that's for sure.
Thank you, Commissioner Laster. Welcome, Commissioner LaCroy.
Funny fact, I worked at a Black Hills pack for two years, so I know how back in those ruins. That was back in my twenties. Long time.
Long time ago.
Long time. Would I get my update? Uh, the Healthcare Trust Board was more or less, uh, re-uniting with some of the board members that hadn't been, been on that for quite a while. Some of the discussions that they had was, uh, on the vision plan. And I, I guess I need help on that. John can explain that. Like, there was that vision plan come on and you have to meet your deductible before the vision gets paid. And there was some misunderstanding on that. But they were working on that, getting it, uh, that information out. Um, but a good meeting. That was actually one I was able to, to, uh, do in person. Uh, the extension advisory board, Travis and I both were zoomed in on that. Um, yeah, you were in on that too.
Yes, I was.
Yeah, so what we did, uh, pretty much during that is, uh, elected the new officers, which were the same from the year before. I don't know if you can help me out with names?
I don't remember. I'm bad with names.
Me too. Dan Ot, what, yes.
Matt Oden and.
Or Matt, yeah, Matt Ot.
Patty.
Patty. It's all the same people, so, uh, moving forward. But, uh, they gave a little bit of a report on that. There's nothing I can really report on. On the Community Health Center, I apologize. And thanks for Travis. You know, when we're doing these Zoom meetings, I had to say, uh, another meeting with the Health, or, uh, Human Relations Commission, a Zoom one going on. So I had my computer, my phone, two Zooms going. So I was appreciative that. I asked him, I said, do you need a quorum? Because I, this is my first meeting with the Human Relations MOA Commission, and we were all getting introduced. And they were good. So I stayed signed on, hoping if we finished one early, I can catch back up. But, uh, uh, yeah, I'm on the, the Health, Community Health Centers. They're doing some outstanding work as far as, uh, the, you know, working with, uh, the COVID and, and I know we've done some policies in the past, updating on the policies and, and credentials of, uh, some of their positions that are on. So, uh, that's what I can pass on with that. The M, uh, the Humans Relation Commission MOA that I got appointed to, we had our first meeting this week and it was just introductory, getting to know each other, uh, telling us, uh, each other about our past and so forth with Malcolm Chapman. Uh, I talked to Malcolm yesterday. Uh, we're gonna start meeting on a weekly basis for the next thirty, four weeks. So, and right now for Zoom and, but trying to get back into the person, the one-on-one, um, meetings. Cause, uh, quite frankly, after being, being on the, the Healthcare Trust Board and being able to meet more in person is way better. I'm, I'm, I'm struggling with these Zoom meetings. I really am. I'm getting to where my attention span's pretty short, you know, and, uh.
Imagine doing your education that way.
Yeah, yeah. And so I'm just kinda, I'm, I'm, would really like to start working our way back into one-on-one meetings.
Okay, I have officially, thanks, Commissioner LaCroy. I've officially turned the gavel over to Commissioner Ross Connect. Uh, I need to leave, excuse myself, uh, to go to a funeral, so. Drive safe.
Thank you. Well, Deb, do you wanna?
You go first. Go ahead.
Okay, I'll go first.
Uh, one of the committees that I'm on is the, a member of the Black Hills Council of Local Governments. Our January the twenty-first meeting, we elected officers. Randy Dybert is gonna be the new chair. We went over the, uh, Tracy Hanson, a member of Cato Thorsonson, went over their findings for the two thousand nineteen audit. And, uh, there are really no concerns to, uh, worry about. A committee will get together before the next meeting to review the bylaws. They're pretty much outdated, the audit, uh, when, how often we wanna do the audit and, and how thorough of an audit that, uh, we're gonna need. Those bylaws will address that. A committee will also get together to discuss the review of, uh, their lease agreement and the area leased. Uh, the one that they, they had on file is nothing more than a handwritten napkin. So we think there's room for improvement on that. So that, uh, the other meeting, uh, I attended was the, on the same day, the nineteenth, Deb and I went to the, we're on the building committee. And I'm just gonna go over some of the items, uh, not in detail, just some of the, uh, construction projects and maintenance projects that's going on in the county. We discussed the main jail and the addition and remodel of two offices. We, uh, there again in the main jail, we're looking at, uh, a remodel of the local reception area to make that a safer environment for law enforcement. Uh, we're doing a jail study assessment, recommendation and budget. We currently have a study going on to address how we're going to repair that failing infrastructure, uh, that mainly focuses around the, uh, the sewer system. It, uh, it's aged and, and the pipes and it's just, uh, it, it needs to be repaired. And it's a little more difficult repairing that and the jail system opposed to an apartment complex. So that's one of our big projects or one of Mike's big projects. Uh, the care campus facility, we're, as Gary mentioned earlier, we're looking at the crisis care expansion. Uh, and that's moving forward, it sounds like, uh, in legislation. Uh, the public safety building, lobby and first floor remodel, evidence building, that's the building over here to the east. The floor is, uh, heaved up on that due to fatty soil expansion. And, uh, we're monitoring, monitoring that and, and just seeing, uh, if that's gonna be, right now it seems to have stabilized, but that's just one of the things on our drawing board. We talked about the radio antenna expansion. There's three proposed sites, Rockville, Keystone and Hill City. That'll give the sheriff's office better communication. Uh, over the fourth of July, when they were at Mount Rushmore, they had some, uh, communication problems. So hopefully, uh, the addition of those three towers will take care of the problem. Our Building and Grounds Director, Mike Cool, he's in the old jail, three oh two Kansas City Street. Uh, they're definitely outgrowing that facility. Not only does he need two full-time employees, but he needs, uh, they just need more area to work and, and work more efficiently. And then we're looking at the facility needs and assessment for the county in the next five to ten years. What are you, what, what are we gonna need in five years and, and ten years? And so, uh, it's better to do that now and then wait ten years and then try to figure it out in one year. So that's one of our ongoing projects. And the Lamp lighter motel that we purchased a few months ago, we're just looking to see, uh, what alternative uses that could be used for, even if it's cold storage. It's, it's, it, it does have some utility. It does have plumbing. Uh, we're just looking at, we don't wanna leave the building empty. So we're just looking at what can we do to utilize, utilize that without any major expense to the county. Uh, Deb?
Thank you, Ron. Um, first we have building committee and Ron pretty much covered that. So we have the Crisis Stabilization Unit that you've seen in the newspaper, which is something moving forward for mental health of different areas, which I think is well needed. And the sheriff is pretty thorough with Barry of knowing the community needs and meeting with the people, um, that are gonna move that forward in a positive way. So I think that's gonna be something pretty exciting. Um, we also, Ron had, uh, talked about needs assessments for, um, basically our area or for our staff or for our department heads. There's a lot of needs. Um, one thing, um, me personally, I think the Buildings and Grounds building and, uh, area needs to have its own building. We do have, um, some properties that we can sell, um, that might help with that. Um, putting it in one area with the, um, things that they use, the things they need in order to take care of these buildings, that's a lot of millions of dollars worth of buildings that, um, basically these guys are, have offices and closets in the public safety building over here. And it's, uh, pretty old. So for me, that needs assessment, needs to be moved forward. Um, I know, uh, Mr. Cool is working on that, but I think that's a priority with that infrastructure as well for the, um, jail. Those, the jail has been on there for years and it's something with water and sewer. You already know if something breaks, it's gonna be major. Uh, for these guys, it's something that, um, in order to make a difference so these buildings stay where they need to be, and they are millions of dollars worth, you need that staff and that ability to be able to take care of the best or take the best care of these facilities with the equipment and the people you need. So, um, sometimes, uh, having buildings that have to take care of and running all over the place trying to get what you need and, and communicate is a lot different than having everybody in a building and your team ready to go instead of having to go find people and find areas, um, later on that these people can, um, be able to take care of these areas. And sometimes they're crisis. So, and so the water, sewers and different things that we need. And we have amazing staff at Buildings and Grounds with years and years and years of experience and leadership and senior people that, uh, if we lose these people, um, it's gonna be huge for us because that's a lot of knowledge. and senior people that uh, if we lose these people, um, it's gonna be huge for us because that's a lot of knowledge. So we already lost Mike Peterson. We do have Mr. Cool, he's pretty amazing at what he does, but um, we need to keep that team. And the harder we make it by um, not having a facility for them to function in uh, like we do our other facilities, uh, it's gonna be huge for the future. So the other thing that I'm on is the Pennington County Housing Authority. They have a newer director with a, a new vision, which I believe is going to be very positive for Pennington County Housing. Um, he's working with partners in, in Rapid City, which hasn't happened for that Pennington County Housing Authority for a long time. Um, people keep calling it affordable housing. It's not affordable when you're talking about um, subsidized housing. In order for people with a low enough income to be able to make it, they're gonna have to be subsidized. They also, you cannot build a building without having some partners and grants to make those buildings and those rents low enough. So all that comes together in one piece in order to have subsidized housing and make it affordable to the people in our community that really need it. So for me, that's a huge thing. I do have um, weekly motels in Rapid City. Um, I know there's a need for uh, low-income housing or subsidized housing. Um, not for me personally. Um, I don't believe they're competing against me. I think they're only gonna help this uh, community. Um, it's gonna be amazing if we can help the people that need that. There's a lot of elderly, there's a lot of veterans that I'm seeing. There's a lot of people that are disabled that aren't getting housing that they need. And people like, oh, those people don't work, they're just using the system. That's not happening. I'm seeing it every day and these are people that have been working. These are veterans that have worked for our, um, fought for our country. These are people that are disabled that cannot do uh, for themselves. And those are the people for me that need that subsidized housing, that need that, that help in our community to move forward. So for me, it's huge um, to have people on there and have a director that wants to work with our community. And Brian Akbach is that man. Um, very fired up, very passionate and just ready to go. So um, very knowledgeable, that's what I like um, about Brian, very knowledgeable about what he does. So they also talked about some, getting some maintenance crews and they went through kinda like stuff, which was pretty awesome. John took us through job descriptions, John Moro from Housing Human Services. So when I got on there, I was like, did you do da, uh, job description? Did you base it on that? And he goes, Brian said, yeah, we did it. We went through job description and we went through uh, basically what Rapid City and did comparables, just like we did. So I said, well, that's a no-brainer. So um, that was pretty awesome that they kinda follow the same process um, on a lot of things that we do. So it kinda corresponds. Um, let's see, what else? Oh, they all, you talked about uh, vaccine sites. Um, they are willing to have, remember the big uh, white building that they voted in over on by uh, St. Joe, or not St. Joe. What's that called? Jackson Boulevard. Um, that is their building for um, Pennington County Housing. That's where they are located, uh, for a vaccine site. So I thought that was um, pretty cool that they wanted to move forward with that. Um, what else are we, oh, we talked about the Edwards. Um, Edward Manor, about making that flat rents, which uh, wouldn't work if you did flat rents. Um, there's a lot of disabled, in fact, uh, very um, develop, developmentally disabled there. And um, their income-based rents are lower than the established flat rent. So um, that won't be happening because again, that's what we're talking about. We, we have to subsidize, we oughta help the disabled, we gotta help the people that need it the most. And um, to put them on the income-based, um, that's not gonna work. So um, I think we're gonna do some good things. Um, also, I'm gonna be up straight that you talked about me being in conflict of interest and I am. For a hundred and fifty-five dollars, I have about a hundred units. There's a lady that has cancer, um, terminal cancer in one of my units. And that's the only um, um, public housing that I get from this, uh, such called a public housing. So I had to write a letter, thank you, Ms. Holly, about um, how I should get an exception for this. Hundred and fifty-five dollars because this lady has uh, terminal cancer. I started in October and she applied for it in September first. I did not know who's gonna be on this committee at that time. Other than that, I disclaimed to them all my LLCs, all my properties, so they could look to make sure, trust, but verify. Tell everybody, other than that, I decided that if I didn't get the exception, that the lady would get her hundred and fifty-five waived from my company as well. So um, the executive director also was very kind about that. He, we wrote a letter, then he wrote a very kind letter that um, he was in favor of giving me that exception for the lady um, for that reason. So it's a pretty cool board. I like working with uh, people, we grew up in my family in low-income housing. We had eleven kids. I know how that feels. Um, we worked, all of us did, but um, you know, you have, at that time, just our mother. Uh, makes a huge difference. And none of us in my family are on any kind of subsidized or anything like that. We've all um, done well, thank you, Jesus. But um, I also have a passion for this, um, type of work. And the people, like I said, people got a lot to say about people that they don't know about and that we just give all our money to these people that uh, don't work and need to use taxpayer dollars. They need to go in some of these areas and see who they're talking about because there's some amazing people that have done amazing things for our country and in the workforce that have had some hard times, so anyway.
Thank you, Commissioner Haddcock and Commissioner Laffendur and Commissioner LaCroy for excellent reports. Uh, what, now we'll move on to approval of the vouchers. For one May and two sixty-nine, oh forty-seven, eleven cents.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried. Now we will, uh, I need a motion to go into the Board of Adjustment.
Not yet.
Oh, excuse me. Any items from the public? Seeing none, then I will ask for a motion to go into the Board of Adjustment.
Nope, we're on consent agenda.
Yeah, straight, no, yeah, straight to consent, there you go.
Right to consent. That would be Ms. Brittany?
Item twenty-five.
Yes, sir.
Brittany, uh, consent agenda, please.
Good morning, Commissioners, Brittany Molitor, Planning Director. The Board of Commissioners uses a consent agenda to act on non-controversial and routine planning and zoning items. The consent agenda is acted upon by one motion and vote of the board. Items being removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda at the request of a board member or a citizen. The consent agenda for planning and zoning contains the following item. Item A is Planning to Development Review PU sixteen zero-three, Dan and Nancy Evangelista, Century Home Crafters LLC, Century Land Holdings LLC and Summer Creek Inn LLC. And this item is recommended to be continued to no later than October fifth, twenty twenty-one.
So moved.
Second.
Been a motion.
Can I have a motion?
There's a motion and a second.
I got a motion and a second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, any discussion? Thank you, Lloyd.
All in favor, say aye.
Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the same. Motion carried.
Good job.
Good morning, Commissioners, Jason Thinnison, Assistant Director. Agenda item B is the second reading of Rezone twenty-dash-zero-seven, Incomprehensive Plan Amendment twenty-dash-zero-five. It was originally heard uh, by this board January nineteenth of this year. The applicant is David Spear. The agent and surveyor is Fisk Land Surveying. The applicant's agent, Fisk Land Surveying, has requested this rezoning comprehensive plan amendment to rezone twelve point eight acres from Limited Agriculture District to Low Density Residential District and to amend the comprehensive plan to change future land use from ranchette residential to rural residential districts. The purpose of the request is to support lot subdivision under the previously heard Layout Plan twenty-dash-four-five. As a reminder, uh, we do need two separate motions for this because it is a rezone and a comprehensive plan amendment.
So. Motion to move to approve Rezone RZ twenty-dash-zero-seven and Comprehensive Plan TA twenty-dash-zero-five? Can I do it that way, Jason?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
We have a motion, do we get a second?
Second.
Any comments? Hearing none, can I get a vote?
All in favor?
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, the same.
Next, Sergeant.
Next item? That's item C, right?
Yes, sir.
Uh, Cody Sack, Planning Department. Item C is Vacational Rightofway VR twenty-dash-zero-three is to vacate a portion of of the rightofway adjoining lots one, two, seven of replugged lots seven and eight of Clear Creek, Creek Placer MS eleven eighty-four. The applicant is Jessica Hessler, Seven Wonders LLC. Uh, the agent is Fisk Land Surveying and Janelle is in the audience if there's any questions. The existing land use is residential, current zoning is general agriculture district. This was routed around through the departments for comment. The highway department came back and said that the rightofway should be given to each adjoining landowners so that the attached preliminary plat, there should not be a ten-by-sixty parcel. And typically, the highway department is opposed to vacation of the rightofway. However, if the um, the split, if the rightofway is a split among the, the adjoining land, uh, they do not oppose it. Also, emergency services said that the site plan shows that Black Forest Place extends to the applicant's address. That was actually on a, a plant, a plot map, um, showing the structure on the parcel and it didn't, on the actual exhibit that will be recorded, it's not shown on there. Uh, so that could then, should not be addressed. Uh, this portion of the plat of the rightofway does not connect to any existing or future rightofway alignments. The lots affected by the vacation of the rightofway have legal access. The vacated portion of the rightofway will be absorbed by lot seven and proposed lot one R. And staff finds no significant issues of the applicant's request. So staff is recommending approval of vacation rightofway twenty-dash-zero-three with one condition.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried, next item?
We're just helpful. We're helping our chairman.
I just wanted to slide across the room with my chair.
Morning, again, Commissioners, Jason Thinnison, Assistant Director. Agenda item D is Layout Plan twenty-dash-four-seven. The purpose of the request is to combine two lots in order to create lot one R of lots seven and eight of Clear Creek Placer. The landowner and app, uh, sorry, landowner is Jessica Hessler. The agent is Fisk Land Surveying, Janelle is in the audience if you have any questions for her. Currently, the two parcels, uh, one of them is point five-three acres and the other is point four-eight acres. Currently zoned general agriculture district. Staff finds no significant issues with the applicant's request as it appears to be in harmony with existing lots and current land uses in the area. The applicant has also submitted Rezone twenty-dash-zero-eight and Comprehensive Plan Amendment twenty-dash-zero-six will be, which will be heard as the next agenda item. Staff did also receive one phone call for a request of information on this property or this request. Uh, we did answer that through a phone call. And with that, the request was sent out for interdepartmental review. Again, county highway did have comments, uh, which were addressed. And uh, with that, staff finds no significant issues with the applicant's request as it appears to be in harmony with existing lots and current land uses in the area. And staff recommends approval.
A move.
Second.
Any discussion? Any uh, comments from the audience? Can I get a vote?
All in favor?
All in, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Same, motion carried. Uh, item E?
Agenda item E is a follow-on request. It is Rezone twenty-dash-zero-eight and Comprehensive Plan Amendment twenty-dash-zero-six to rezone one point zero-one acres from General Agriculture District to suburban residential district. And also to amend the comprehensive plan to change future land use from rural residential district to suburban residential district. The applicant again is Jessica Heis, Hessler and the agent is Fisk Land Surveying. Uh, staff's analysis of the request is that there are several properties zoned suburban residential district within one-half mile of the subject properties. Therefore, the applicant's request to rezone appears to be in harmony with current zoning in the area. Uh, the Comprehensive Plan Amendment twenty-dash-zero-six, future land use within one-half mile of the subject properties identifies several properties uh, zoned as suburban residential district. Therefore, the applicant's request appears to be in harmony with the county's future land use designations in the area. And staff recommends approval of Rezone twenty-dash-zero-eight and Comprehensive Plan Amendment twenty-dash-zero-six. Uh, one note, uh, we did receive an email regarding this property. I believe you were provided a, a copy of that as well. I did reach out to the individual. He was under the impression that this property was being subdivided even further. I told him that it was actually the opposite, it was being combined, so I think we address that.
I'll move to approve.
Second.
All in favor? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried, and item F?
Item F is road construction within a section line rightofway CS twenty-dash-zero-one. It's to construct a road within the section line rightofway. The property is located between sections twenty-two and twenty-three, township one S, range five E. The applicant is Keith Kuchenbecker. The landowner, JV Gulch LLC, Isaac Almanza. Staff is recommending approval to construct the road within the section line rightofway CS twenty-dash-zero-one, which includes constructing the section line rightofway. Two county ordinance from standards and the following eight conditions. Ordinance fourteen requires a sixty-six foot wide easement, sixteen feet may perpetual easement in the general agriculture, limited agriculture, LDR and SRD districts. The applicant will not meet that. Maximum grade of no more than twelve percent, the applicant will meet that. Maximum degree of curvature, no more than twenty-one percent, the applicant will meet that. Crown rates of zero point zero-two feet to zero point zero-six feet per maximum super elevation, he will not meet that. Maximum in slope shall be no more than four to one back slope, may vary, but under no condition shall be greater than one point one to one for ditches. The applicant will not meet that. Ditches have a minimum depth of two feet, the applicant will not meet that. Culvert shall be sized, uh, there will be no culverts on, on the road that was proposed. And dead-end roads have a cul-de-sac with a minimum constructed radius of fifty feet. The applicant will not meet that. Gravel surface shall meet the requirements of part B, granular based surfacing to standard specification for roads, bridges, South Dakota Department of Agriculture, Department of Transportation, require six inches. The applicant will be four, so he does not meet that. And roads with uh, that have or will have two hundred and fifty average daily traffic or more should be paved. This is a private driveway, the applicant uh, will not need to pave the driveway. The property is zoned general agriculture district. There is, there is special flood hazard area on the property. The hundred-year flood planet is vacant, many structures. This was routed for comment. County highway came back and had questions on if it was for a private driveway um, or if it was gonna lead to more development and if there was an easement on lot two next door, uh, next, next to the property. Uh, staff did have a conversation with the highway department um, that it is only for a private driveway and therefore, as long as it was, they had the easement, um, highway did not object to the request. The road will be constructed to fourteen feet wide with four inches of gravel. Ditches will be minimal, no culverts and the road will cross the section line for sixty-six feet with roughly sixteen feet of disturbance through, uh, through. The applicant is requesting to waive ordinance fourteen standards, that will be item G. The applicant is in the process of acquiring a building for a single-family residence. This is a driveway to that single-family residence and it appears, it appears that the road is outside of that special flood hazard area. So again, staff is recommending approval to construct a road within a section line rightofway CS twenty-one-dash-zero-one, which includes constructing the section line rightofway, two county ordinance, fourteen standards with eight conditions.
So moved.
You got a second?
Second.
Deb?
Second.
Deb, second, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried. Onto the last item, G?
Item G is the request not to submit engineered road construction plans to have a road width of fourteen feet instead of twenty-four feet, to have a gravel surface of four inches instead of six inches and to have slopes greater than four to one and ditches less than two feet deep and to not construct a turnaround. Uh, it goes back to the previous request. Uh, it goes back to the previous request, um...
Cody, can I ask you some questions?
Yes.
Our chairman, sorry. Um, number one, that's a pretty big parcel to leave one house on. If you look at the surrounding area, um, there's a lot of suburban residential in that area to the, I don't know if it's north, south or east-west, but, um, after going through the standards with planning, with highway, um, at this point, not putting in culverts, not doing twenty-four inch or twenty-five-foot roads, uh, you have four-to-one slopes. That's a pretty big drainage, if I'm thinking right. Um, have ditches less than two feet deep. What's gonna happen to the, is it, I don't know if it's north, south or east-west. What happens is drainage affects those areas as well. Um, like I said, I don't see this staying one parcel like this very long. Um, if we don't start to do it with these bigger parcels now, I think we're gonna have problems later. Um, for me, I, I, I will be, um, voting to deny. If it was like a suburban residential or something, lot up there, um, no big deal. I mean, they probably already have what they have, that kinda thing, but not on these big parcels. For me, it doesn't make sense to waive that anymore. Um, I have on a couple of instances because it did make sense, but in this parcel, like I said, um, especially with flood hazard in the area, um, we're gonna end up having to pay for culverts and make it bigger roads. And at this point, I think, even if it's a driveway today, it's not always gonna be a driveway.
Is there anybody in the audience that wants to speak on this?
I'm sorry, Mr. Oskanek, what was the question?
I just wondered if there's anybody, if there was anybody in the audience that wanted to speak on this?
We reviewed the, these plans. We, we were, that, our concerns were much like, uh, Ms. Haddcock's. We, this is fifty-three acres or so, I believe.
Fifty-two, I think, fifty-two point something.
Um, which is accessing through the neighboring property. There, so that, our questions were, is, is this a, is there an access easement there? I guess, is it a public access, is it private access? Because if it, if this is gonna be developed, uh, property, uh, we definitely would not support, uh, variance in the road standards, um, and, and there would have to be a public access across the neighboring property there. The potential for a lot of, uh, problems with the neighbors here. Uh, if, if it is truly a private driveway, highway has no jurisdiction on that road that goes through there except where it crosses the section line and, and of course, we wouldn't, uh, require that twenty-four feet be built just on that section line if they're crossing. But that's why we commented the way we did. We had, we have concerns of future use of the property.
So the access of, of Highway thirty-five, is that where they go across that bridge?
There's a bridge there on Highway eighty-three, five, uh, neighboring property, right in that, right there, uh, it's a, a new bridge that was, well, fairly new bridge.
Is that their, is that what they use for access?
That, that's, goes to the property, that's where the arrow is there. Um, that was our question, is there an access easement across that property for, uh, this property that we're, we're talking about today?
So chairman, can we continue this, maybe to have some of those questions answered before we make a decision?
I think that would be fair, uh, as we're missing one commissioner now. Um, so the, the app, one, when I got highway's comments back, I did email the applicant. He did send me a document of a, um, an easement through that property. It, he mentioned it not being recorded yet. I don't know why it hasn't been recorded yet, but he does, he is working with the engineer for that.
So maybe Cody, that will continue, or if we can get a motion to continue, if we agree today, that would make more sense and he could come back and have the applicant here as well and explain to us some of this.
And I'd like a chance to do a, a site survey or a site inspection because that is, uh, in my backyard almost, so, uh, and it would be good to have a full commission here, so I would ask for variance.
I'll move to continue.
I'll second.
At the next meeting?
Yes, ma'am.
The sixteenth?
Sixteenth, ma'am.
So the motion is?
Move to continue till February sixteenth.
And we got a second? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Well, uh, go ahead and continue to the next meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mark.
Move to go in an executive session?
I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Based on SDCL one-twenty-five-dash-two-dash-one and one-twenty-five-dash-two-dash-three.
Move to come out of his exit.
Please come out of executive session.
Motion to come out of his exit.
Motion to come out of executive session?
So, second.
She said motion!
Okay, we're good.
All in favor?
There you go.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Uh, any items from Human Resources?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. LaCroy?
I would make a motion to move to approve the exception to the wage policy and move Health and Human Service Director Barry Tice to a grade D-sixty-two, step five, three thousand, six fifty-eight, forty cents, bi-weekly, effective February seventh, 2021.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried.
Job, John.
Move to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Do we do guffey?
Do I get a second?
Oh, okay, sorry. Yep, in favor.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Meeting adjourned.